Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council. It is Tuesday, July the 23rd, 2024, 9:00 AM, and I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on July 9th, 2024 be adopted.
Everyone satisfied with the minutes? Okay, councillor Hens, you'll move. And councillor Latham, you'll second. All in favor? That is carried, thank you. Remind members of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Councillor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Warden. 6.8, the Carlton Line culvert replacement.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Section 4, presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. 4.1, this morning, we have Kate Burns Gallagher present, the Executive Director of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, for a WOWC annual update. Good morning, Kate, and welcome.
Good morning, Warren, thank you. Through Uta County Council, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. As mentioned, I'm Kate Burns Gallagher, and I'm the Executive Director of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, or WOWC as we affectionately call ourselves. So I'm just here today to provide an update on our 2024-2025 strategic priorities. So what we're going to be going into AMO next month with as far as our delegations as well. And a little update as well on our accomplishments over the past 12 to 18 months as an organization. Next slide. So just a quick overview of who we are. You can see on the map there, we are the 15 upper and single-tier municipalities in the western part of Ontario. We are 117 municipalities strong, more than 1.6 million residents, and 90% of our region is rural. And that's a really key piece of our caucus, is we are rural. And that's the glue that binds us together. And that's the strong piece of our advocacy, is that our single and upper-tier municipalities have a really strong rural component. And that's what we really focus on when we cone in on our strategic priorities and advocacy. Next slide. So the purpose of the organization is to come together with one voice for the benefit of all of the region, all of the constituents and taxpayers in Western Ontario. And we do this through a number of different avenues, particularly through advocacy. Next slide. And how do we do that? We do that with an incredible team. So we have our caucus, where you're represented quite well by Warden Ketchabah. Then we have our CAO team, where you have CAO Parkin. And then we have our staff team, which includes myself as executive director. We have a manager of government relations and administrative coordinator. And then from there, we have our boots-on-the-ground committees and teams. So we have our Economic Development Committee, which is made up of elected officials, staff, and ministry liaisons, as well as stakeholder groups. So anything from the regional tourism organizations to workforce planning boards and a wide array of ministries. So that group really lets us know what are the pain points? What are the issues in the region when it comes to business? And that helps inform a lot of our advocacy. And most recently, we've introduced our subject matter expert teams. And these subject matter expert teams are correlated to our strategic priorities. So we have our planning subject matter expert team, and we are so thrilled to be adding Matt to that planning team for our first meeting in the fall. And then we have our social services team, which really looks at the mental health addictions and homelessness. And Elgin County is represented there by Heather Sheridan from the city, who represents city and county. Then we have our communications team, and Jessica has sat on that prior to her mat leave, and Sheila now covering the mat leave. And last but not least, our economic development staff team, where Carolyn sits on that subject matter team as well. Next slide. And I mentioned we do our work through advocacy. So what does that look like? It looks like letters, financial analysis, ERO submissions on any of the legislation that comes out, as well as pre-budget submissions. So we are busy writing to the provincial government on any number of pieces of legislation that come out in relation to our strategic priorities. We also monitor all of the government legislation, and we partner with many organizations, from the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, to the Ontario Big City Mayors, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, AMO, and of course, we have SWIFT as well. Next slide. So digging into our priorities, our first priority, I'm sure, which is no surprise, is housing. And we have two key asks under housing when we're going to the province next month for AMO. The first being that we are requesting that the two remaining components of development charges be reinstated. A large chunk of those development charges were reinstated as part of Bill 185. However, there's still two pieces remaining. And those two pieces are housing services and the cost of land. We're asking those to become eligible once again. And those two pieces of DC costs add up to about $4 billion over the course of 10 years for municipalities. So it's a huge chunk of money we're missing from our municipal tax base. The second piece is how our small and rural communities can access the Building Faster Fund. There was about $120 million in that Building Faster Fund that has been set aside for small and rural communities, and we have not been given any indication of how we can access that funding. So we need to know how we can access that funding. Our communities are building housing, and we need to be able to access that funding. In addition, as well as part of the budget, there was the Municipal Housing Infrastructure Program, a $1 billion fund. And as well, there's a rural component that was put aside for that funding, but we don't know how to access it. So we need direction on how to be able to access that as our rural communities. Next slide. Our second priority is infrastructure. As no surprise, you can't have housing without water, wastewater, broadband, all of the infrastructure to support the housing. And so we are going to the province to ask for clear communication on what that infrastructure build-out looks like for our region. On top of the growth that we're forecasting through our planners and our growth plans that we already have, in the last 18 months, we've had about $40 billion worth of investment announced in Western Ontario alone from Stellantis, PowerCo, Honda, and Bruce Power, equalling about 30,000 jobs. All growth we were not anticipating. And then with that growth comes workforce, housing, people, and infrastructure requirements that aren't on our budget plans and in our planning. So we need the government to come to the table, if they're attracting this investment to our region, to come to the table to support this investment through infrastructure and dollars. Next slide. And we can't build the infrastructure, and we can't build the housing if we don't have people and a workforce to build it. So we are really focusing in on workforce as well as a third strategic priority. And really looking at how can we make sure we have people that are already here, that are already housed, getting into the workforce? So it's looking at skilled training, it's looking at transit and funding for transit, and continuing funding for transit, and supporting SCORE and the SCT network. So that's the South Central Transit Network. It's also about supporting childcare, so that people with children can get into the workforce. So we're looking at opportunities to fund programs that are here already to get people who are housed here into the workforce. Next slide. And last but not least, we have our fourth priority is mental health addictions and homelessness. And two specific asks here. We know that homelessness in our rural communities looks very, very different. It's couch surfing, it's living in your car. It's not necessarily the very visible homelessness that you see in our urban communities. And so with that, we're asking for dedicated rural funding stream for the homelessness prevention program. We have a number of communities where the separated city is the service provider. So we want to make sure that that rural stream is dedicated to our rural communities. And secondly, the Mobile Crisis Response Team. So that's where we have a social service worker paired with a police officer. We've had great success actually with this program in working with the Solicitor General. He came to our caucus meeting in June, and we've been advocating for this to become permanent funding. Well, we've moved the needle. It was one-year annualized funding, and we're now at three years. So the Solicitor General came to our caucus meeting to thank us for our advocacy of moving that needle from one to three years. But we're going to continue to push to get this to permanent funding, because we are seeing great success in diversion rates of people from emergency rooms with this program. Next slide. That wraps up our key strategic priorities and what we're going to AMO with. But we continue to support SWIFT and the great work that SWIFT does in making sure that our communities have broadband, that essential piece of infrastructure as well. And you are incredibly well represented by councillors Jagir on the SWIFT board. And we are also going to AMO with a request to Minister Sirmah to get an update on ASAP, to find out, and that's the provincial broadband program, to find out what is going on with ASAP. We don't know at this point where the projects are going, how much has been dedicated to that program. So we're trying to get an update for our communities of what that looks like. Next slide. And as I mentioned earlier, economic development is a huge piece of the puzzle of what we work on. And the Economic Development Committee really is the boots-on-the-ground committee and work that tells us about those pain points that are happening in the community and feeds that up to our caucus. So most recently, we've been talking about transit and how that community transit funding wraps up in March 2025, and how those transit systems can continue working and operating in our communities, as well as the blue box transition. So the province has announced and is rolling out, instead of municipalities collecting recyclables, now the producers of those recyclables need to collect them. And we're having some issues with commercial and institutional and industrial sites having those recyclables picked up. So we're looking at that from a rural lens, because the cost of picking up from rural stops quite far out, several kilometers away from other stops, is a huge concern. So we're looking at that through a rural lens. And caucus will be investigating that in August. Next slide. And I would be remiss if I didn't come to your council and let you know about our Ontario West Municipal Conference. We're incredibly thrilled to be hosting this conference. It used to happen annually as a partnership between the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing and AMO. And unfortunately, in 2018, it ceased to continue at that time. But as a caucus, we were able to come together and resurrect the conference this year, and we hope it to be returned annually for the Western Ontario region. So the conference is happening on Friday, October 25th, in Chatham, at the John Bradley Centre. The day is fantastic. We have keynote speaker Paul Wells, who's a well-known political journalist from the Toronto Star, McLean's, the Globe and Mail. And we also have breakout sessions focused in on our strategic priorities over the course of the day. And we also have several ministers as well from the province who are confirmed to attend. So registration is open now, and early bird pricing is available until Labor Day. So we hope to see all of you there, as well as your staff from your municipalities. Next slide. And at the top there, I mentioned we would just cover over a few of the accomplishments we've had as a caucus over the past 12 to 18 months. And the first up, we were really thrilled, we had some local MPs reach out to us when that federal riding redistribution plan was coming together, to ask us to work with them and advocate to ensure that we maintain this rural seat count in Western Ontario. So we worked with our local MPs, MP Vecchio being one of them, MP Gladue, to ensure that we kept a rural seat. And because of our joint advocacy with our members of parliament, we were able to keep that federal rural seat for Western Ontario here in the London region. So we were quite thrilled with that advocacy work we were able to accomplish. Secondly, last May, May 2023, if you'll recall, there was Bill 93 from the province, which was going to allow three severance slots from every farm in Ontario. And that was going to have a detrimental effect in Western Ontario. We would have looked to have lost about 750,000 acres of land in one foul sweep of legislation. So we immediately began advocating to the government, multiple ministers, Thompson, PA Ray, and several others. And we were able to have the province reverse course on that piece of legislation and protect farmland in Western Ontario particularly. Most recently, we've had success in advocating for the leaf-to-construct threshold. So this is a threshold for gas pipelines. For any new investment, if it's more than about 500 meters to get gas line to them, and it goes over a $2 million buildout, it triggers an Ontario Energy Board application, which delays about 18 to 24 months. And we've lost over about a billion dollars, sorry, in investment in the region because of this leaf-to-construct. So we've done joint advocacy with SCORE to get this leaf-to-construct threshold increased to 10 million. And the province has done that, so we're incredibly grateful for that. We've also secured community response pilot project funding. So I mentioned the Mobile Crisis Response Teams. This is similar, this is pairing a social worker with a paramedic as first response. And so we secured pilot project funding for Lampton, and that was just announced about eight weeks ago. And that was the first of its kind for this project. So we were thrilled that it was able to happen here in the region, and many thanks to Minister Tavolo's office. We've received an invite to the Provincial Housing Forum last November, and as well, we are incredibly thrilled to be bringing back the Ontario West Municipal Conference to the region. So that is just an overview of our strategic priorities and our accomplishments for the past year. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you so much, Warden.
Thank you very much, Kate, for that presentation. A lot going on. Does any member of council have any questions for Kate? Yes, councillor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for that presentation, Kate. Actually, more of a couple of comments. I heard you say that we cannot access funding for rural municipalities in the millions of dollars, because there's no mechanism to access that funding. For lack of a better word, that seems rather stupid on the part of the government to do that. It's a government issue, I take it, that they haven't provided a means to access that. The second comment I have is that you did mention that homelessness funding is funneled largely through social service agencies in separate, separated cities or larger cities, and that you're looking to push for a specific amount of homelessness funding set aside for rural municipalities. So I certainly support that, because I think that's a major issue in terms of dealing with social services. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Again, Kate, thank you very much for the update. We have a resolution?
Resolved that the presentation from the Executive Director of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Noble, and I see councillor Cookett. All in favor? That's carried. Perfect. Moving on to Section 5, Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
Mover and seconder, councillor Hens and councillor Jagir. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Section 6, Reports of Council, outside boards and staff. 6-1, the Warden's Activity Report for June 2024. The report has been included in the agenda. A lot of activities occurred in June. All of them were very enjoyable to attend. And if you have any questions on any of those activities, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them. Otherwise, it's to be received for information.
Resolved that the report titled "Warden's Activity Report, June 2024 from Warden Ketchabah, dated July 23rd, 2024" be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and seconder, please? Councillor Latham and councillor Widner. All in favor? That's carried. 6-2, councillor Noble, Updates to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Are you speaking to this councillor Noble? Okay, the report is in the agenda package. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. I think the ask is essentially to reduce the mandatory number of meetings from four to two with provisions that they can be called at the request of the chair as necessary. Does anyone have any concerns with this? Like, we are moving into, you know, we are moving into the era when, of course, accessibility requirements are becoming more and more, in fact, required by January of the upcoming year. And this will always be, I think, something that needs to be focused on and continued to work on. But I think a lot of work has been done. The second thing I notice is that our human resource department will be taking over the secret... Well, they are the secretariat, but they will be taking over the lead, since we don't have a joint accessibility coordinator anymore. Okay, I think I've covered it. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for councillor Noble? That was easy. Catherine, please.
Resolved that council approved the proposed changes to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference as recommended by the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, and that these terms of reference come into effect upon the approval by Elgin County Council and Central Elgin Council.
Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Noble will move, councillor Hens will second. All in favor? That is carried. Moving on with 6.3, with the Digital Services Librarian, the Elgin County Library Programming and Partnership Update for July of 2024. Good morning, Sheen.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, through Uta County Council. My name is Sheen Steele, and I'm the Digital Services Librarian for Elgin County Library. For those of you who are unfamiliar with me and the work that I do, I manage our digital holdings, that includes eBooks and online databases. I represent the library with many of our community countywide partnerships, like the Elgin, Ontario Health Team and the Alzheimer's Society. I take care of the library's social media accounts and the library website. I also help provide staff training, and I help facilitate countywide programming, which is why I'm here to talk to you today. Next slide, please. So just as a quick reminder, the Elgin County Library system has 10 branches throughout the county. There is at least one library branch in each of our municipalities. Our branches are run by branch supervisors who, along with their staff, determine what programs they provide to their communities. They use lots of different tools to run successful programs, including community input and feedback, advanced registration through our integrated library system, which helps to gauge community interest in any given program. Repeating programs or holding multiple sessions to accommodate waitlists, modifying programs to appeal to a wider audience or an entirely different audience. And they also collect statistics on all programs run to help inform future programming. This is all done based on demand, the availability of space, technical supports, and staffing resources. Program development is also linked to the library's strategic directions, service priorities, and community needs and interests. Next slide, please. So, since it's been a while since I've given you all an update, I thought we'd go back briefly to the Summer Reading Club 2023. 2023 was the first summer we used a new online resource to support our summer reading program. Beanstack is our challenge reading, our reading challenge platform, sorry. Through Beanstack, kids logged how many minutes they read each day, and we actually had a competition where we pitted the branches against each other to see who could read the most. Elmer Library won, which is not a huge surprise, as they serve the biggest population. But Stratfordville and Dutton Library did give them a run for their money last year. And spoiler, this year Stratford Library is well in the lead. So Elmer Library has a bit of work to do there. The Summer Reading Club programs were varied and fun and educational, like always. I've included some photos here. Balloon Arts at Stratfordville on the left, a prize wheel at West Lawn, a visit from the local fire department, which happened at multiple branches last summer and this summer, a visit from the Canadian Raptor Conservatory, and boxcar building and movie watching. This is just a small selections of the great programs that we had last summer. And if you want to see what's happening this summer, make sure you're following us on social media. Next slide, please. Smiling faces isn't the only way we measure how successful summer reading is, although it's certainly very important. Over the course of the six weeks of summer reading, we hosted 101 programs across our 10 branches that 3,315 kids attended. We had 1,110 kids registered for the Summer Reading Club program, which is our highest registration ever. And in our first year of using our reading challenge platform, we had 279 kids contributing to the branch versus branch reading competition, which was slightly under our hopeful expectations. However, since we started using Beanstack in the winter of 2023, Elgin County readers have logged over 1,250,000 minutes of reading. So we're pretty confident that they just needed some time to get used to a piece of new technology. Next slide, please. For our summer family scavenger hunt last year, we tossed Elgin County with visiting all 10 of our library branches and locating the potato family member hidden at each branch. They then had to submit a photo of themselves with the potato through our website to be entered to win a giant prize basket. Each branch built their own potato family member using the various potato heads that the system already owns, including a Mandalorian potato that you can see in the bottom right of the potato family photo there. We had 449 submissions, and I've included some of the photos with the kids' faces covered. We received tons of positive feedback about this program, and we're back this summer with a new idea that I'll mention briefly later on. Next slide, please. Our community-wide, oh, sorry, our countywide community partnerships continue to grow and help us to better understand our various community needs. Again, this year, we are partnering with the Thames Valley District School Board to collect donations for their best-first-day campaign, which gathers school supplies for kids in need. We are accepting donations till August 1st. You can drop them off at any of our 10 branches and even here in the admin building. We have a very strong partnership with the St. Thomas Elgin Local Immigration Partnership, STEELUP. They provided our staff with some training on planning culturally inclusive events back in the fall. And this photo, the second one from the left, is of a March Break program that they ran at Springfield and Belmont Libraries. I am also currently in the middle of a two-year term serving as the Chair of the STEELUP Council. The Storytime photo, which is the second from the right, is from the recent Masonite Community Services Food Fest. We have a fantastic relationship with MCS. We provide content for a radio show for kids that airs weekly. We were happy to attend the Food Fest for the first time this year to provide some entertainment and literacy support for the kids. And the last photo on the right is of the Children's Water Festival, which returned to Pinnifal Park for the first time since the pandemic. We were asked to help facilitate the Watery Word Station. Staff took some water-themed books, and the 3,200 students that came through from across Elgin County, Middlesex County, and London, all enjoyed reading about water in the shade of our tent. In fact, we were surprised by how popular we were. Next slide, please. A quick look at some of the great programs we've had over the winter include Storytimes, the Haunted Library at Dutton, family puzzle competitions, cookie baking and decorating, stuffy sleepovers, programs facilitated by local experts like Peter Jiddadecki from the Royal Canadian Astronomical Society in advance of the solar eclipse. He's also coming back over the summer to do some Twilight programs, which we're very excited about. Staff participated in various Santa Claus parades. And that last photo is of someone who thoroughly enjoyed being put into a historical photo, thanks to the Elgin County Archives partnering with us on a program using our green screen. Next slide, please. The challenge we posed to Elgin County this winter was to read enough minutes to snowshoe our way from Elgin County to the Arctic Circle. Every 60 minutes read equaled a kilometer. And I'm happy to say that collectively, Elgin County read 117,867 minutes over the five weeks of the challenge that we ran through our reading challenge platform. Next slide, please. It was another highly successful March Break this year, with 1,459 kids attending 38 programs during the week. And for the second year in a row, we had to be mindful of our fire code capacities due to the popularity of our programs. For example, this year, Shannon Library hosted a program facilitated by Raised Reptiles, which is always so populated, draws massive crowds. This year, they implemented advanced registration, and they also used a larger space in the Keystone complex and still had to watch the numbers of people as we neared the capacity for that space as well. Next slide, please. The Forest of Reading is a nationwide reading program that shortlists 10 books in various age categories, and then provides students with an opportunity to read the books and vote for their favorite. For anybody interested, there's also an adult category. If you visit our library branches, our staff will help you read that shortlist if you feel so inclined. The Blue Spruce Age category covers picture books. So every April, we work with our local schools across the county to read the 10 Blue Spruce books to the kids and collect their votes. You may notice some familiar faces in those photos. I didn't get a picture of everybody on county council who helped us out this year, but beware next year. Next slide, please. Here are some more program photos that are not specifically tied to the winter. I won't go into great detail, but I think they showcase the great variety of programs that our staff managed to provide to our communities, including seed libraries, art-based programs, tech programs, a local author panel, family puzzle competitions, art show with art shows. There have been many, with art from the community, programs for homeschooling families in our communities, seniors' lunch and learns. The bottom-right photo is actually from one on fraud prevention that was presented by Officer Fair. And beside that, just to the left, is a program that was presented by a deaf doula about pairing to pass with grace. And we have lots more programs, but this is just a bit of a... And we have lots more programs, but this is just a bit of a snapshot. Next slide, please. Okay, so we've caught up to the present. Uh, Summer Reading Club two thousand and twenty four started at the beginning of this month on July second. Uh, it runs until, uh, various times in August. I think the last Summer Reading Club Program is on August seventeenth. I could be wrong. Don't quote me. Um, Summer Reading Club is super exciting. Uh, it takes a lot of staff work, but we're looking forward to a summer of great programs, some great reading and some great fun. I've included some photos of programs that have happened so far, uh, including the first two on the bottom left. Um, that was a visit from the Saint Joseph's High School Robotics Team. We taught some very excited kids how to build robots and how to program them. Then we had a foam party at Belmont. Um, some prizes are already being won and a visit from Supergirl at Sheddham and Port Stanley Library. Next slide, please. So our Family Scavenger Hunt this summer is chasing constellations. There are ten constellations scattered throughout the library branches and through Beanstack, our reading challenge platform, families can submit their entry each time they find a constellation. There are some great prizes up for grabs again, and as of yesterday, there have been two hundred and ninety four entries submitted. And families have until August thirty first to get their entries in. And next slide, please. So very quickly before I wrap up, I do want to give a quick update on the Elgin County Website Redevelopment Project. Uh, a report will be coming to council in the future following the launch of our new website, which is currently on track to publish at the end of August. Uh, I'm very happy with how the project has been going. Staff have been working away for the last ten months, meeting with the various county departments, assuring the needs they all have for the new website, meaning with the company retained for this project, Sandbox Software Solutions. And most recently, over the last four months, earmarking what content needs to be migrated over, what content needs to be developed and putting that all together. Um, as I said, more information will be coming once the website is up and running. Um, and that's it for me. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for that, uh, in-depth report. A lot of activity going on. Does anyone have any questions? Please, Counselor Jagir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden through you. Uh, comment and question. So it, I'm I'm impressed by the programming. It's so nice to see there's seems to be a range, um, of activities and diversity of activities and and great uptake. And often laugh, you know, the cliched statement when you say communities, like we need vibrant communities. And to me, that's an example of vibrancy. And, um, when when you see that level, when when there are things to do for families, uh, together all times of the year and different types and different accessibility. So my question is really to you and the staff, like, are you satisfied with the uptake? I know a lot of effort must go into, um, organizing all that programming. So do you see that we're oversubscribed, undersubscribed? Are you meeting your own expectations?
Oh, thank you. My apologies. Um, every program is different and every community is different. A program that might work in Elmer is not necessarily going to work out in Portborough, for example. Um, so it is a constant, um, reflection process that happens. I think overall staff are happy with the turnout. But I will mention that the landscape has changed. The needs of the community has changed post-pandemic. And we are constantly adapting and changing. We're seeing new families all the time. So it's a constant process. But we do have, uh, a, uh, management, for lack of a better term, meeting, um, every six weeks or so where we talk about things like that. So we're constantly comparing with each other and getting feedback and what works and what doesn't work. Library programs are never static. They're always moving. They're always changing. But I would say overall staff are happy, um, and it's sometimes overwhelmed by the response that we're getting, like March Break.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Kinjin. Uh, again, a very encompassing report and lots of activity going on. Catherine, please.
Resolved that the presentation titled Elgin County Library Programming and Partnership Update from the Digital Services Librarian dated July twenty third, two thousand and twenty four be received and filed.
Move her in second or please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Jagir will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Six, four, moving on to the Director of Planning and Development, Township of Malahide Official Plan Amendment Number Twenty Four. Township of Malahide File Number MA OPA one dash twenty four. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, so OPA twenty four was adopted by, uh, Malahide Township Council on May sixteenth. The purpose of the amendment is to redesignate certain lands within the township from agriculture, uh, to mineral aggregate resources. And this was to facilitate the use of the subject lands for mineral aggregate extraction. No concerns were raised with respect to the supporting materials provided. No objections from the proposal were received by the township prior to making the decision. County staff have had the opportunity to review the proposal against the requirements of the Planning Act and PPS and County Official Plan and Township Malahide Official Plan and are satisfied that the proposal meets all relevant requirements and it's appropriate and we recommend approval of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, very much for that report, Matt. Uh, does anyone have any questions and or concerns? I would note that, uh, it has been thoroughly vetted. Uh, the local conservation authority, uh, has, uh, no concerns. I thought it was interesting that it's what, maybe a mile away from the Colton Swamp? Seeing no questions?
Resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin approves Official Plan Amendment Number Twenty Four to the Official Plan of the Township of Malahide and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Move her in second or please. Counselor Latham, Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Six point five, Manager Emergency Management and the Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School Legacy Wells Initiatives for Years Two and Three. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Mr. Warden through you to council. I'm here today to discuss the Legacy Oil and Gas Wells Year Two and Three Application Proposal. Next slide, please. Uh, the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry is leading the development of Comprehensive Action Plan to help the, help address risks and, um, sorry, from oil and gas wells in southwestern Ontario. So the action plan strategy focuses on understanding risks, reducing risks and enhancing emergency preparedness. And in June of two thousand and twenty three, M and RF launched the Legacy Oil and Gas Wells Transfer Payment Program Funding. So understanding that reducing the risks of legacy wells involves many ministries and municipalities, the province tried to establish a cooperative and collaborative approach to finding opportunities and solutions to move forward. Next slide, please. The Transfer Payment Program involves a seven point five million dollar investment over three years. Um, it's targeting nine municipalities, so Chatham, Kent, Elgin, Essex, Haldeman, Niagara, Norfolk, Brant, Lampton and Oxford. Um, these are the areas in Ontario with the greatest number of legacy wells to a greater or lesser degree than the others on the list. Year one, which is twenty three to twenty four, we were just wrapping that up in the spring, uh, had two million dollars of base funding collectively, of which Elgin received two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Year two, which is the current year, and next year, year three, uh, year two is looking at two point five million dollars collectively and three million collectively for all nine municipalities. Next slide, please. For year one, the eligible activities were training, communications, monitoring and assessment, building capacity and supplies and equipment. And you might notice that all of these categories are all are categorized to align with the action plans area of focus that we just discussed. The eligible activities, um, are largely largely remain the same for year two and year three. Next slide, please. So to recap the deliverables for year one, we had a very productive year for the year one legacy wells. We trained over six hundred and fifty people in hydrogen sulfide awareness, hydrogen sulfide survive, emergency social services training, crisis communications. We educated a hundred and twenty five people at the Petroleum Emergencies Workshop, which I know many of you, um, attended, so thank you. We purchased gas monitors for all fire stations within Elgin County. GIS mapping of our legacy wells. Next slide, please. And to continue those deliverables, we purchased hazmat training suits. Um, we acquired three reception trailers to fill the gap that we recognized in two thousand and twenty two during the winter storm, as well as a large transport trailer for fire hazmat decontamination equipment. We improved the EOC and we also participated in local and municipal working groups. So we definitely for year one deliverables, we aimed for, and I feel successfully achieved, a comprehensive year one project that touched on all three key areas for the M and RF, um, action plan. So year two and three, um, eligible activities, like I said, they they remain largely the same to ensure an ongoing alignment with the strategic objectives, um, from M and RF. And you will see this on the left side of the chart regarding base funding. It will remain the same through year two and year three, as was, um, the case in year one with two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for Elgin County. For year two and three, M and RF has allocated a portion of the funding for collaborative projects. So the funding, which is point, or sorry, half a million in year two and one million in year three is open to any of the participating nine municipalities. And it will be disseminated based on approved projects. So it's not a set amount that would be received with an approved proposal. It would depend on what the proposal is being put forward. Now, M and RF is allowing municipalities to apply for year two and three base funding and collaborative funding collectively, which is what the intention is for Elgin County. Next slide, please. So for Elgin County's year two proposal, we're looking to narrow our focus. We were very broad and encompassing all key aspects during year one. We're looking to narrow focus to improving preparedness and an emergency response through the collaborative approach of um, emergency response planning and building capacity. Collaborating with our lower tiers to facilitate the creation or updating of a hazardous material-specific ERP, as well as ensuring accessibility of the legacy wells mapping, which we conducted in year one. This will improve preparedness across the county. We're building capacity, establishing a fire training ground accessible to fire services across the county, area industries and even neighboring jurisdictions, allows improved and collaborative training in a capacity we currently do not have access to in Elgin County. So areas of hazmat training, live fire, thermal dynamics, search and rescue and high angle training and many more. Next slide, please. You will note that part of the, uh, year two proposal, year two and three, sorry, proposal is the possibility of acquiring land. So we are looking at multiple locations, um, that are being considered, some of which would require acquisition of land and others that would utilize county assets. Finalization has not yet been determined. However, the criteria being considered has been identified. And as you can see, we are looking at areas that have hydrant access with sufficient flow rates, um, centrally located for the best access throughout the county and to neighboring municipalities, leeward of or out of close proximity to residential areas or other sensitive land uses. Uh, land area of approximately three to five acres, um, for future expansion of the training ground as funds and partnerships become available. And it was expressed that Saint Thomas does have, uh, interest in the opportunity. Uh, land that is cleared, ideally paved or packed gravel to decrease ground preparation costs that would come out of the funding, as well as, of course, being cost effective. So there are some details, um, as you read through your report in your package, that are still being determined. Um, and I just, I guess I want to remind everyone that it is, we are looking for approval to submit the proposal and details, of course, will be brought to council as we receive them. Next slide, please. Looking at the financial considerations, there is a lot of information on this slide, so we'll walk through it together. The left two columns, year two funding and year three funding, I apologize, I'm just noticing now year three is not there. I'm missing a three. You will see the base funding of the two hundred and eighty thousand as we had in year one. Coming down to the next section, collaborative projects, again, we would be applying for a portion of the collaborative project funding. The amounts listed there are accessible to all nine municipalities. So in the total, in the estimated total funding, uh, it was it was estimated one ninth of that, um, collaborative projects portion. It would be determined on the application that's put forward, whether we received money and how much of that money that we would receive. If we take a step to the right, I just want to note that project expenses, um, anything exceeding the funding that we would receive, um, we would come forward with a request, uh, from the county to cover that, however, only to the extent which could be recovered through rental and user fees of the, uh, of the training ground, such that it did not fall to any of our residents. And last, if we look at the far right column, cost recovery. After speaking with many municipalities who have very similar training grounds on topics such as maintenance, cost recovery, um, renting out the facilities, it was noted that this is a very conservative, um, cost recovery model. Um, and what you're seeing here is the potential rental of the grounds at seven hundred and fifty dollars a day, um, with only four days in a month being rented out. That does yield three thousand a month or thirty six thousand in a year. And over the twenty-year lifespan of the, um, the live fire structure specifically, which is the most expensive component, we are looking at seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, next slide, please. So implementation of this proposal will offer a number of benefits to Elgin County, its lower-tier municipalities, area industry, um, as well as many of our neighbors, not to mention the over four hundred and fifty firefighters from across Ontario that participate in training that come through the Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School. So some of the benefits, we are, you know, improved emergency management planning and response with the hazard-specific ERP, increasing awareness with access to GIS mapping of all the wells in each municipality. Opportunity for more complex training scenarios for hazardous materials, live fire and many others that will improve firefighter skill level and ultimately service to their communities, communities. And as mentioned, we don't currently have accessibility to this type of training in Elgin County. A collaborative training opportunities with other lower-tier municipalities, which would strengthen the capacity for a multi-jurisdictional response. This is actually quite important because should we experience any incident that involves gas wells or legacy wells, it would definitely be a multi-jurisdictional response. Opportunity for training with area industries that fire services are expected to work closely with, um, to establish an effective response. So oftentimes there are industries that come to the area that have their own fire response services in onsite or on staff, if you will. Um, and they also will need a place to train. And not only that, but being able to potentially collaboratively train with some of our aerial lower-tier municipalities that would ultimately cover that industry would also be beneficial. The ability to train in the capacity that is not currently possible within Elgin County, as I mentioned, uh, currently any fire department within Elgin County that would like to train on a live fire structure does have to leave the county to do so. A decreased training costs without having to travel outside the the county. So that keeps our fire services close to us. Next slide, please. So it is recommended and requested the County Council approve the submission of the year two application to the Legacy Oil and Gas Wells Transfer Payment Program. And knowing that the additional information will come as we receive it, including ultimately the funds that may be allocated to Elgin County through this proposal. And I'm happy to take any, any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Andrea, for that report. Uh, any questions from members of council? I'll offer a comment of my own. Like, when I first read the report, I kept thinking in the back of my mind, this is an initiative linked to, uh, uh, legacy gas wells and things. And it was hard for me to see the connection between the general facilities and the requirements, and I'll admit they're needed. Back to the intent of the minister here. Are you confident that it's within?
I feel quite confident. I have had, um, conversations with, uh, M and RF representatives. I have had conversations with MRF representative that is overseeing the legacy wells. Those conversations began last fall as to whether this would be a viable option. I do know that she felt the same. She felt very confident that it would be. She has also spoken to her superiors. And she actually reached out to me after the spring, the spring meeting, asking if I was going forward with that initiative. And of course, that was dependent on some of the information we needed to gather still. And of course, still, still dependent on on some of the information that we will, that have yet, is yet to be received.
Okay, thank you for that, Andrea. Once again, opening to the floor, any questions from members? Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled Legacy Wells Initiative Year Two and Three from the manager of Emergency Management and Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School, dated July 23, 2024, be received and filed, and that approval be granted for submission of the proposed application for the MRF's Legacy Wells Municipal Transfer Payment Program Year Two and Three Funding.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble. Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Okay, Andrea. Looking at the next report. How long do you think?
I, it should not take long, sir.
Okay, then let's entertain it. We have, we have to break at 10.
I will talk fast. Ontario's engaging partners and stakeholders on proposed modernization of the Emergency Management and Civil Protections Act to support safe practice in Prepared Ontario. The oh, my apologies, sorry. The province continues to work with partners to strengthen emergency management through targeted investments. And, sorry, enhance capabilities and expanded training across Ontario, as highlighted in the 2023 annual report, which is included in your package. The province's engagement on a modernized legislative framework is an integral next step to identifying opportunities to ensure that Ontario and our municipalities are ready for today's challenges and those in the future. The Emergency Management and Civil Protections Act establishes the province's legal framework for managing emergencies by defining the authority responsibilities according to provincial ministries, municipalities, and to specific individuals. The 2023, in 2023, the province released the emergent, the provincial emergency management strategy and action plan, which outlines Ontario's vision roadmap for emergency management. One goal of the modernized Emergency Management Civil Protections Act is to deliver on and align with goals and actions outlined in the provincial Emergency Management Strategy and Action Plan. With the current initiative, the Emergency Management Ontario is seeking further input on five key areas focused, sorry, five key focus areas to inform the development of a proposed modernized legislative framework that reflects an increasingly complex emergency landscape, is informed by best practices and lessons learned, and aligns with Ontario's emergency management vision. The five key areas of focus, as listed in the report, the scope of emergency management, one window approach to provincial emergency management coordination, enhancing coordination between government, broader public sector, and external partners, improving the consistency, quality, and inclusivity of emergency management programs, and reflecting how Ontario works with First Nations partners in emergency management. To support engagement, a discussion guide has been posted as well as included in your package. And this discussion guide will be open for feedback from not only council members, municipal staff, as well as the public until August 26. So it is recommended that members of council, municipalities, and people interested in the public take advantage of this opportunity to provide feedback to the province. So feedback can be shared from council to Elgin Emergency Management Department. Or you can take this back to your municipal councils and discuss it and then submit based on the discussion guide, either through email or or mailing address, which is included in the report as well. The Emergency Management Department is working on this. We're doing a deep dive. It's actually just come across our desk very recently. However, given the deadline of August 26, I did want it to bring to council to ensure you guys had enough time to to look through it and and offer any feedback you might have. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. I certainly appreciate that. I know it was, yes, distributed to you July 3 with an August 26 deadline, thinking that's rather a quick turnaround, but that's particularly during the summer. Is it your intention that you will circulate this particular report to our local municipal partners?
I am, I am doing so through our Emergency Management Program Committee meetings.
Okay, perfect, so that they have opportunity to know. Yeah, and we'll get it on the local agendas. All right. Any questions for Andrea on this? Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Andrea, do you think this is going to cause increased levels of bureaucracy? Because sometimes one situation doesn't fit all situations. Just curious about that. It seems like it may, but.
Through Mr. Warden to Counselor Widner. It's hard to determine coming from the province which which direction it's going to go, how it's going to land with each municipality. Could it? For sure, it could. It could also change the legislative requirements for emergency management. But the last time that it was reviewed was in 1990. So I do think that it's probably due to speak to today's issues.
Additional questions? Counselors, your.
Thank you, Mr. Wardens. I'm wondering if we have another council meeting on August 13. Would it be possible to see the draft submission that been collected from all the municipalities?
At present, because each of the alternate CEMCs in all the lower tier municipalities have received the same documentation that I did, I brought it to their attention. I did not ask for their feedback. I just asked simply for them to take a moment, the same as yourselves, to take a moment and and consider giving feedback. So I may not have all of, all of that.
Please.
So even if it was just your response on the proposed county response, I would be interested in in seeing what the staff analysis is and what you're submitting as comments. And perhaps, I think, for me anyway, it would be easier to comment further and say, yes, this, thank you for flagging this and just to keep us involved in the process, if that's possible. I don't know if the 13th is too soon or even just a draft.
Yeah, I'm sure that we can take care of that, not a problem.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled Engagement of Modernization of Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act from the manager of Emergency Management and Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School, dated July 23, 2024, be received and filed, and that members of council be respectfully requested to review the attached discussion guide and provide feedback to Elgin County Emergency Management Department through your municipalities in collaboration with your respective municipal councils or directly to the province, and that staff provide county council with a report summarizing proposed comments for submission at the August 13, 2024 county council meeting.
Mover and seconder for that. Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? And that is carried. And at this point, we are going to recess and reassemble at the Heritage Center flagpole. Welcome back. We left off at section 6.7, Director of Engineering Services, the East Road CR23 pedestrian crossing. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of county council. The county has received some concerns in regards to pedestrian vehicular movements at an intersection in Port Stanley due to its unique geometry and sightline restrictions. And this report recommends implementing a pedestrian crossing, a sidewalk extension, and some vegetation removal in order to address those concerns. The intersection of East Road, Joseph Street, Curry Boulevard, and Prospect Street, each leg of this intersection has its own name. It's also affectionately known affectionately known as Schoolhouse Hill. And many council may recognize this intersection. It's immediately east in of the main intersection of Bridge and Colburn within the village of Port Stanley. And that steep hill is the only pedestrian access for the residential development that has occurred in over the last few years on the east side of Port Stanley. And concerns for the safe operation of this intersection have also increased over this time. The intersection had operated for many years as a three-way stop intersection with uninterrupted flow movements for the vehicles traveling up the hill, traveling east on St. Joseph Street Hill and then north on East Road. And it was purposely designed that way because the the hill has a 12% gradient. And we didn't want vehicles to unnecessarily stop on that grade if they didn't need to do so. The issue arises as vehicles travel up that road, the intersection is hidden. And therefore vehicular movements at the intersection, as well as pedestrians attempting to cross the intersection, are sometimes met abruptly with vehicles coming up the hill. Fortunately, there has not been a collision history in this regard. However, a number of near misses have been identified. Recently, a stop sign has been installed on St. Joe, on Joseph Street to make this a four-way intersection to provide an inexpensive, inexpensive solution to allow all road users safe maneuvers. Staff reviewed the activities of the intersection after the stop sign was implemented and found that it was operating as we expected and met the goals, the intended goals of that additional stop. However, we do understand and recognize that winter weather may create more significant challenges than had been hoped to be resolved with this change. Therefore, to implement a permanent solution to improve safety for all road users as well as pedestrians, a number of initiatives are proposed. Firstly, vegetation will be removed on the east side of the intersection to improve sightlines. And this will necessitate the removal of some very large mature trees. Secondly, a new pedestrian crossover is proposed just north of the intersection. And this will allow vehicles who come up around the intersection have a space for them to queue, not on a steep grade. And it'll allow pedestrians a safe crossing over on East Road. There is a diagram on the following page of this report that depicts the location of where this new pedestrian crossover is located. The crossover will be the typical type we were all accustomed to now with flashing LED beacons. In order to facilitate this new pedestrian crossing unit, a new section of sidewalk and curb and gutter will have to be installed on the west side of East Road for approximately 40 meters. The County of Elgin is responsible to implement warranted pedestrian crossing facilities. However, sidewalks are a local municipal responsibility. And therefore, the municipality of Central Elgin will be requested to partner with the county on this project to fund the cost of the sidewalk and the curb extension to the new proposed pedestrian crossing location. Once all of these activities are completed, the newly installed stop sign on Joseph Street will be removed, reverting the intersection back to its historical three-way stop control intersection. And staff endeavors to have this work completed before year's end and before the winter season sets in. The estimated cost for the pedestrian crossover unit is $60,000. The tree removal is estimated at $5,000, and the sidewalk extension is estimated at $10,000. And that is the portion that the municipality of Central Elgin will be requested to fund. Because this was not a previously planned project for 2024, it's recommended that the $65,000 be allocated from the reserves capital projects account. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Peter. We were made aware of the issues and concerns earlier this spring, and thank you for bringing the the temporary measures forward. And this looks like a more suitable permanent solution. Any comments or questions from council members? Any concerns? Counselor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Warden. We, we appreciate all the effort that's been put into this, and I know this has gotten a lot of, it's been a hot topic in that area. So we appreciate the effort and going forward, we're hoping that this will be the best opportunity to fix this solution or find a solution to this problem.
Thank you for that. Any additional comments, concerns, questions? Counselor Counselor Widner.
Thank you, Warden. I guess it's another good example why reserves are a good thing to have, because sometimes things like this pop up. And we're going to get the money if you don't have it in reserves. This won't be the last thing. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. See, no additional remarks? Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled East Road, County Road 23 Pedestrian Crossing from the Director of Engineering Services, dated July 23, 2024, be received and filed, and that the municipality of Central Elgin, as a project partner, be requested to fund the cost of extending the sidewalk on the west side of East Road to facilitate the project.
Mover and seconder. Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving to 6.8, Director of Engineering Services, the Colton Line culvert replacement. Peter, another unexpected.
Thank you very much. To you, Mr. Warden, to the rest of county council. A 62-year-old multi-plate 2.1-meter diameter steel culvert located on Colton Line immediately east of Mitchell Road has been identified as needing replacement this year. Routine inspections along the road found a settlement over this culvert. And then after the investigation pursued following that, we found that some backfill around the culvert was washing away. And it became, began to jeopardize the structural integrity of the culvert. And that's why this report's in front of you today. Preliminary engineering findings found that the existing 2.1-meter diameter culvert meets a today's 10-year storm design standard. And that was typical of culverts of the era. Unfortunately, that discounts then a slip lining solution to be implemented at this location. It's normal for us at during any calendar year to be to find one or two soil steel culverts that cross the county roads that require some immediate rehabilitation. And normally, the contingency within our slip lining annual tender contract is extended to to repair those identified culverts. And unfortunately, in this case, a slip lining solution is discounted. A minimum 50-year storm design would require a 2.4-meter diameter culvert. And the recommended 100-year storm design would be a 2.7-meter diameter culvert. Although this is a little in excess what we require at this time, we want to ensure we account for potential future unknowns of climate change. And also, at some future point, a new culvert will require replacement and will afford future generations who are responsible for these assets, a future slip lining solution. It's estimated to cost approximately $400,000 to open excavate this roadway and provide a detour. We also expect that the project will take a few weeks at the earliest to resolve. This was an unplanned and therefore project for 2024, and therefore, funding is once again recommended to be allocated from the reserves capital projects where sufficient funding exists. I'll be pleased to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Peter. Again, an unexpected. These surprises crop up all the time, and when you have older infrastructure or aging infrastructure, it's going to come along. The one question I have is you have an estimated cost of $400,000. I assume that's not just for a culvert, I assume that's to install it.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. That, that, right now is our estimated cost for the complete project. That's not only the supply of the culvert, it is completely removal, installation, as well as engineering services that Spree Associates has had their contract extended. Council will recall, we've awarded a contract to Spree Associates to rehabilitate five bridges across the county. And they were a suitable contract contractor with such expertise to extend these services for this replacement activity.
Just one more comment or question from me, Peter, for the edification of council. How deep is this culvert?
I believe the existing cover is approximately 2.5 to 3 meters. The culvert itself is 2 meters in diameter, so this is an approximate 5-meter excavation.
Yes, okay, which explains the cost. Any questions from members of council? Counselor Jiguer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll first echo my colleague Counselor Widner on the another example of why we need good reserves to to manage capital projects, unexpected one. So on the unexpected part, I'm wondering if you can expand. I know we have in place a robust asset management plan that tries to calculate end-of-life cycle and But this one appears to be a little bit out of the blue. So I didn't have a chance to dig up our last asset management plan to see what was the plan and what explains the surprise, I guess.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. I'd be pleased to answer these questions because it explains the type of decision trees we incorporate on an ongoing basis. And the projects that we recommend to council always has this thought process behind them. In 2009 was the last time we completed a major rehabilitation on Colton Line. And at that time, this culvert was addressed and a full investigation on its condition was made at that time. We were hoping, at that time, the culvert was 47 years old. And steel culverts can range in age from anywhere from 40 years to 75 years. These larger multi-plate diameter culverts are a much thicker gauge and they tend to last a lot longer. So at the time when we were there in 2009, we extended one end of the culvert that was damaged. We reviewed the rest of the culvert and we were hoping to get this asset through the next rehabilitation cycle. You won't find this culvert explicitly identified as a separate line item in our asset management plan because it's less than a 3-meter span. Therefore, it doesn't technically qualify as a structure under the Ontario Structure Inspection Manual. Therefore, it doesn't get the biannual inspections like our other large culverts or bridges do. All of those assets have a very specific line item in our AMP. This is identified as a drainage facility within the roadway. So in 2009, we had hoped to get another rehabilitation life cycle of about 30 years. That would make the culvert 77 years old at that time. Unfortunately, we did not. Culverts in 1962, I'm really not sure how they were installed. But I know that we are very cognizant about installing such culverts these days because they heavily rely on the construction methods and the backfill material. On their own, a culvert has no rigidity or strength. They really rely on the supporting backfilling granulars for its structural integrity. And today, we will line the bedding with clear stone. We'll use filter cloth and we'll ensure that we achieve proper compaction under the culvert haunches. And there's also other unknown variables that sometimes crop up. It could be the water or the soil acidity also that affects the degradation of the steel culvert facilities. Today, we have more robust coatings on these culverts, high-density polyethylene plastic coatings on the culverts, or the culverts are better galvanized or luminized, hoping to prolong the age of these structures. So we had attempted to get more age out of this asset. We did not. We would have inevitably been replacing this culvert at some point in the future. And unfortunately, we're just doing it a bit sooner than planned.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Any additional questions, comments? Okay, Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled "Colton Line Culvert Replacement" from the Director of Engineering Services dated July 23, 2024, be received and filed, and that staff be authorized and directed to proceed with the replacement of an existing culvert on Colton Line immediately east of Mitchell Road at an estimated project cost of $400,000 and funded from the reserves capital projects account.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Henson and Counselor Shiger will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. 6.9, Director of Financial Services, the Treasurer, County of Elgin Reserves and Reserve Fund Policy. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. Municipalities are not-for-profit and therefore raise the money that they need through user fees, funding, and tax to fund the areas that they are responsible for. Once raised, we should have a known use for all of the money and funds within our possession. And any surplus deficit should also have a designated use or future need. As outlined in Appendix 1, the purpose of the reserves and reserve fund policy identifies that a financial reserve is a provision for an amount that is designated for a future purpose that extends beyond the current fiscal year. Reserves are established for a variety of purposes, including to ensure the ongoing financial stability of the organization, to protect against known risks and unforeseen events, to provide for life cycle replacement of county-owned capital assets, to meet specific obligatory liabilities, to smooth expenditures which would otherwise cause fluctuations in operating or capital budgets known due to increased needs, to provide for planned future expenditures, and to provide a source of internal financing. These funds should be managed in the same manner as a prudent investor with no risk of loss to the original investment. From time to time, there may be savings or deficits which are held as equity. Reserves and reserve funds provide a more detailed breakdown of the equity portion of a corporation's balance sheet, including a municipality. The county has not had a formal reserve and reserve fund policy in place. Historically, staff have leaned on best practices to manage reserves at the end and the beginning of each year as per our legislative requirements. As we move forward with impending growth and additional provincial requirements, it is relevant to proceed forward to put practices and procedures into policy. It is expected that this policy will assist the county as we move forward to complete asset management plans, which are not only tied to funding opportunities, but what will prepare us for future growth and management of all of our asset base. The report is provided today to outline guiding principles, primary objectives, key criteria for administrative responsibility, and standards related to the care and management of financial reserves and reserve funds held by the Corporation of the County of Elgin. As it relates to establishing the reserves and reserve funds for planned future capital expenditures, unexpected events or extraordinary expenditures which would otherwise cause fluctuations in operating or capital budgets, managing reserves and reserve funds in a responsible manner, and utilizing reserves and reserve funds solely for their intended purposes, for example, donations, outlining responsibilities of employees and council who govern and administer the public funds. As per the scope of the policy, the county's practice is to establish and maintain segregated reserve funds that meet all statutory obligations. These are maintained in accordance with the Municipal Act 2001, which include but may not be limited to Sections 11, 290, 291, 417, 4, 418, 3, and 4. Reserve and reserve funds management is outlined in Section 3 of the policy. Reserve and reserve funds shall only be established or modified if they are supported by a council-approved financial plan that identifies needs, targets, contribution sources, drawdowns, and investment of funds. This is generally done through the approval of the budget and the final year-end financial statements. Funds generally are dealt with on a case-by-case basis to consider the following: the purpose of each fund and how it is expected to be funded, synergy as it relates to the current strategic plan, the certainty of its needs or end needs, best practices, standards regarding the identification of need and target balance levels, with reference to several legislative areas through the MFPA, the GFOA, the PSOB, and GAAP. Economic factors: reserve and reserve fund balances and associated targets shall be reviewed periodically to ensure adequate reserve and reserve fund levels. Changing of reserve and reserve fund names can be made with the approval of the treasurer designate while ensuring the purpose and intended use of the reserve or reserve fund is not changed. And a recent example that we had of that was when the federal gas tax was named the Canada Community Build Fund. We changed the name of the reserve. Investment of reserves are managed in accordance with the county's investment policy. And the investment policy was approved by council in June of 2022. The policy further outlines the contributions to or withdrawal from the reserves. Again, this process is covered within the budget and year-end procedures. However, since provincial timeframes differ from ours, for example, their year is April to March, we have allowed for special consideration for reserves to be used to match funding that may become available. And this would be done by special reports to council, such as you've heard today on two instances for capital. Internal lending of reserve funds between reserves is allowed and is necessary. And there is a provision in the policy to manage this. Currently, this is being done for Terrace Lodge rebuild project as we await an interest rate decrease. Termination of reserves may be necessary if they are no longer needed. They are no longer within the scope of the county's strategic plan. The program commitments have been completed and no future commitments are expected. The treasurer is confident that balances in other areas can mitigate the need to hold any remaining reserve or reserve fund balance. These will also be identified by the treasurer at year-end reporting with recommendations as is necessary. Target balances will be identified and are in Appendix A to the policy, which outlines existing reserves and their purposes. Where target was identified, it was added as a description rather than as a number under the target balance, with further detail outlined in the next section relative to the use of year-end surplus deficit relative to funding. So under departmental operating reserves, we have some definition there of how we fund that. Growth-related reserves, specific funding resources, reassessment reserve, which was new in 2024, the mill rate, or what we call the mill rate, or the tax rate stabilization fund, which the county uses as working capital and to provide assurance for our borrowing bylaw and to cover the ARL repayment limit as prescribed by the ministry. So some of these targets move annually. So we have sort of a broader arching answer for our target on that. Specific capital fund reserves, this area we are definitely lacking in with many of our reserves held at a zero balance. And as I mentioned, the Terrace Lodge is in a negative position at this time for funds will be borrowed at the end of that project. The rest of the reserves are reserve funds and outline the net book worth of existing assets that the county is responsible for and that we hold on our books. So the capital fund, that long-term debt, that is debt held by the county and owing back, work-in-progress completed reserve, this is the amount of cost that we have already invested in carry-forward capital projects that are not yet put into service. The net book value of our tangible capital assets are the assets that are completed and in service. And this represents the historical cost, lest our amortization to date. Capital fund, completion of work-in-progress, this will be the remaining amount of money that we have raised and is left to support the work that is necessary to complete carry-forward projects. So it works in tandem with the completed reserve, that work-in-progress. Further responsibilities includes council approvals and treasurer responsibilities that are required to manage and maintain the integrity of the reserves, including review of the policy and amendments to the policy. And finally, there is an area that provides definitions for some of the words used in that policy, just for clarity. Appendix A does outline the various reserves that are currently active within the county ledger. They are defined by operational and capital reserves and also are noted as obligatory with an O. Staff have identified the reserve name, the purpose, the high-level target balance, the source of the funds, and the use of the funds and authority and timing of when we will fund that reserve. Appendix 2 of this report outlines the balances that were on file in each of the reserves at the end of December 31, 2022. And currently, we are working our way through the FIR towards conclusion of the year-end for 2023. This has to be completed for the auditors before we can close and provide reporting to council. In conclusion, the reserve and reserve fund policy is created to provide explanation and guidance for the use of reserves that are held by the County of Elgin. Staff recommend that council provide their approval of the policy presented to formalize financial practice into policy to clarify the purpose and use of reserves and reserve funds for the public, council, and administration. The recommendations are before you, and I'd be happy to hear any questions or answer any questions.
Thank you, Jen, for that report. Does anyone have any comments or questions, concerns? I think as you explained or espoused, Jen, that this is simply putting in writing or formalizing what is currently best practice for the county anyway. And I think it's a good idea. It's an educational piece. And I like the idea that each term of council will have an opportunity to review this. I think it's important. Counselor Shiger?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So yes, thank you to staff for putting this together. It's nice that this documents our practices, so there's no assumptions made. I know for me, the most important part of a reserve policy is the target piece because it's supposed to be, we'd like to be able to look at the reserves and make informed decisions. So if we don't know if this reserve is too low or too high, then I don't feel that we would be equipped to make the decisions we want to make. So in Section 3A, I'm wondering if we can beef up the language a little bit because it says that target funding may be, I forget the words exactly. But I noticed throughout, there's shall, which I'm assuming means will and must. And so that will happen. But when it comes to setting target funding, I'm wondering if we could agree that it would be, shall be established? So yep, you were right there, 3A.
Second paragraph?
Right there. So target funding level, second paragraph, may be established for all reserves and reserve funds. Is there a reason why it says maybe as opposed to the other statements that say shall?
Through you, Mr. Warden, and to Counselor Shiger. For the most part, we do have some reserves on here that are for donation purposes. And those ones, we would not be able to set a target for because they are more of an operational. And we can't determine how many donations we'll get or what the homes or library or archives might use those for. So in most cases, we would be able to, in the larger funded ones for capital facilities. But we don't have an asset management plan yet that we've been able to glean that information from. So that is a definite will do. But right now, I didn't want to put that in as a, that we shall, because we don't have the information that will inform that target yet.
Wondering if a possible workaround is, again, wording such as where appropriate, because obviously donation, we don't have control over that. But where appropriate funding levels or target funding levels shall be established. I mean, maybe that would preclude the areas where we don't have any control. I'm just trying to find a workaround for you.
Yeah, and I think that's, I was thinking along the same lines for reserves within our control. So it's the donations we don't control and we can't set a target. Did I see our CAO wanted to say something?
Yes, he wanted to chime in here.
So I'll just say then, because you mentioned the asset management plan, I would like it to be listed also because I see a number of other documents are listed. And to me, I think the whole point of why we're investing a lot of effort in a solid asset management plan is to help us also set the targets. So I would like to see the AMP mentioned and tied really closely.
Okay, Blaine, you wish to chime in? And good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, members of council. And I apologize for not being able to be in attendance in three dimensions instead of my two-dimensional state currently. But sometimes things crop up in life, as you can appreciate. So nevertheless, with respect to our reserve policy, that's been very well outlined by Ms. Ford and in response to Counselor Shiger's comments. And I've mentioned this to council on a couple of occasions, that a sound financial policy framework, I believe, is a foundational element to to prudent management of the county finances, especially given what the next number of years will likely hold with respect to growth across the county. So these will be a sort of a little bit of a living, breathing documents for a little while as we continue to put the other foundational pieces in place. The other element, in addition to Counselor Jiguer mentioning the asset management plan, which is one of those key foundational elements. And as Mr. Ducek has explained previously when those plans have been presented, the final piece of those plans is describing and identifying levels of service for each of our asset classes, which obviously then leads to a discussion about how to finance those levels of service, being sort of the level of services on one side of the ledger and the, how you fund it is on the other side of the ledger. All of these pieces will come together in a long-range financial plan that Ms. Ford and I have begun speaking about, that we'll speak to council about undertaking that project in 2025. But once all those pieces are together, then the shall part of the targets of those key resources or those key reserves, as you've mentioned, Mr. Warden, the ones that are most applicable to our, our funding, our capital and things like that, then that shall, will evolve to a should. And there will be targets set because council will then have all the pieces of the information necessary to have a much more fruitful discussion and be able to set those targets based on funding levels, the levels of service that we need our assets to perform at, what the community itself is looking for with respect to services and service levels. All those pieces will then become available for council's consideration. And as I mentioned, that shall will evolve to a should. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you for those comments, Blaine. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none. I will ask Counselor Jiguer, did you wish an amendment at this point? Or shall we wander through the process and? It would, it would require an amendment to the motion, that's all. She can do it, of course, but that's, what's the will of council? And I see where Blaine is going, you know, and indicating, let's get these foundational pieces in place and.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. So I agree, this will be a dynamic and evolving document. I think for the time being, if we can put either, just some qualifier to maybe or, or shall be, with the exception of reserves not within our control, e.g. donations. So whichever way we can capture that little nuance so that doesn't go missing in the evolution of the document.
All right. As amended? Catherine, please.
Resolves that the report titles County of Elgin Reserve and Reserve Fund Policy from the Director of Finance Treasurer dated July 23, 2024 be received and filed and that the finance policy 0504, as amended, as reserve and reserve fund policy in Appendix A of the report be approved to provide guidance on the general use of the County of Elgin reserves and reserve funds.
Mover and seconder. Thank you, Counselor Jiguer. Uh, seconded by Counselor Hens. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving on to 610. Director of Financial Services Treasurer, County of Elgin Growth Reserve Policy.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Council requested staff to provide recommended best practices for the newly acquired reserve called the Growth Reserve. The policy outlines the background related to its establishment as a reserve after the last development charges study was not approved by council. The policy purpose is outlined as to guide county administration and county council in managing the reserve known as the Growth Reserve. The purpose of the reserve is to provide sufficient funding for new growth infrastructure, known as GI, in the county level, at the county level due to growth using assessment obtained by growth. It is expected that combined with or without debt, that the reserve balance should provide the necessary financial support to sustain new county infrastructure needed for growth and expansion due to growth. Notwithstanding the deferral of development charges, should the County of Elgin determine that development charges will be implemented at any time in the future, the Growth Reserve will be maintained in order to support new growth infrastructure development when development charges run lean. The policy includes areas where these charges can be include, can be used as per the last Hempson study in 2021. These areas include library, land ambulance, long-term care, provincial offenses, roads, which also includes bridges and culverts. Intended use of the reserve is for the expansion of existing infrastructure where that, where that is needed due to growth of capital or new capital required that is also related to growth, which is consistent with the use of development charges. This reserve was not created for, or intended to be sufficient for operational needs that arise due to growth or for other uses over and above any areas other than the ones outlined in the Hempson study. The county may consider the use of debt to fund capital related to growth, which is in alignment with the vision of the GI growth within the county and as per infrastructure planning. The policy speaks to the investment and alignment of the county's infrastructure as it relates to developer commitment relative to growth. Since the county does not have development charges, we have added wording to protect our interests with our ability to secure written commitments before investing in major infrastructure development. The Growth Reserve may be used to make payments on debt that is taken out and which is directly related to that growth. It is the, it is policy that the growth, it is policy that the Growth Reserve policy, in the Growth Reserve policy, sorry about my wording on that one. The Growth Reserve policy will be reviewed in conjunction with any development charges study that the county would wish to proceed with as an additional study to maintain congruent practices. Under responsibilities, the policy outlines staff responsibilities, identifying and prioritizing new municipal growth infrastructure that supports new assessment base. This part is a little new and we talked with Peter about it, which is preparing a separate 10-year capital forecast that would anticipate expected or anticipated growth and is expected that this will be a separate growth plan that would be added to the existing capital plan. So when something was confirmed, it would then be added to the existing capital plan as a for-sure thing. This one would sort of be the one that fluctuates and is dynamic. We would consult with the development industry on their capital forecasts for growth, annually review a projected 10-year cash flow analysis of the expected expenses with finance involved as per 2.2A, report to council on the forecasted capital needs for municipal infrastructure growth and when projects will be started or added to the 10-year budgeted capital plan, which would trigger use of either the reserve or debt. Prepare and administer agreements that trigger construction of new county-owned municipal infrastructure due to growth. Finance shall maintain record-keeping and provide annual reports for the growth reserves for each and/or for each DC reserve when if established. Assist other departments with the creation of the 10-year cash flow analysis of 2.1B. Analyze available resources required to cover anticipated funding related to 2.1B and/or E. Report to council on funding gaps and debt requirements. Prepare borrowing bylaws and fund the reserve in the following manner. And that just outlines the procedure that we currently undertake in order to fund the Growth Reserve each year. Council's responsibilities are to be familiar with county plans, bylaws, and initiatives to facilitate growth, including but not limited to the development plan, strategic plan, the master service plan, asset management plans, growth strategy, and reserves policy, and debt when if applicable. Review and provide feedback to administration on capital forecasts for growth and debt requirements. Approve borrowing bylaws and annual financial plan as per the municipal act. Approve recommended changes related to the administration and development of policy updates. Recommend council's desire to reengage in an updated development charges review. And then again, definitions are provided for clarity of references within the policy. The conclusion is that the Growth Reserve was created to provide a base for the development of new and expansion of existing county-owned infrastructure using the philosophy of development charges whereby growth pays for growth. This reserve was and will continue to be developed by setting aside known growth to support this, this county strategy. The policy was developed to formalize the intent and use of Growth Reserve for the public council administration. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much for that report, Jen. Does anyone have any questions, any concerns? Counselor Jiguer?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you also for this policy, much needed. For as long as we don't have development charges, I agree, we need to pursue this and implement this to make sure we have a solid budget. So my question is, so we discussed earlier that eventually we're going to add targets. And once we have those targets, do we also need a provision for when we possibly could surpass that target? So in, in other words, there would be a surplus within that reserve. Do we need to have a provision that anticipates that event and what we do? What, is it supposed to come to council for consideration as to? Because even with development charges, I think there are limits, for example, in certain categories. You can't exceed, you can't accumulate beyond a certain amount or percentage. Any thoughts on that? Do we need to anticipate that and capture it in the policy?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Jiguer. I can't wait for that day. I would anticipate that there, it's a possibility for sure. I would also anticipate also that, you know, as we get to a certain point, that growth would also sort of level off. And that maybe, you know, we, if we have debt, we can use some of that, those funds to pay for that debt as opposed to putting that burden on the ratepayer. So I think there is going to have to be some conversations with council during that period of time. Like, how are we using this reserve? And those are all part of the conversation that we have at budget and also at year-end with the surplus.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yeah, I agree. I hope this is a problem we can have. But then, so could we consider a clause that captures both? So what if this reserve is actually under target? Where are we going to fund it outside of growth? And what if it's over target? So maybe just a more generic clause that when this reserve is not on target, plus or minus, that there would be, that we will agree that, I don't know, that it will come to council for, with staff recommendation on ways to proceed, like just to capture something that would trigger a discussion and decision-making.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Jiguer. So I think in the policy, we talk about the fact that timelines can move and there's also the potential for debt to be taken on if the Growth Reserve hasn't fully funded itself. In that case, we would take on the debt. And then as growth occurred, we would be able to use that growth dollars in order to fund the debt that we took on in order to manage doing the growth or building the infrastructure in anticipation of that growth. So it, when we say growth pays for growth, that's sort of the intent of that clause in there. And also, we don't intend to be investing in infrastructure unless we have a solid commitment from, from developers or we see that growth. So we don't want to just be putting things in the ground in anticipation of that. So there is going to be that ebb and flow of timelines as it relates to, you know, developer interest, where things are happening in the county at certain times. So we will have those conversations along the way. So I think that's maybe what that paragraph was trying to achieve. And if we need to add some wording to that, we can.
Presumably, this is the same principle as the previous policy where it will evolve depending on need. So I'd be happy to leave it at that for now and to see if the, if the language, when we meet those, or we get to these crossroads, then we'll find out if the policy is helpful enough or if it needs to be tweaked. So I would be fine leaving it as a first go.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment, I'm, I, if I recall correctly, when we discussed the issue with the Growth Fund back on the proposed budget on February the 27th, and correct me if I'm wrong here, part of the issue was that we were talking about where we would find money to support grant requests. And I think council thought at that time that there should be a report that comes forward in terms of how we do handle grant requests. And I know this has nothing to do specifically with the grant fund now that we've clarified the whole issue of the grant fund. But I would like to see sometime in the future, just to remind council that we will continue to get grant requests. And there should be some kind of a policy that deals with either a reserve for those kinds of things or that we don't do them at all. So I don't think, I'm not asking to do anything at this point, but just to remind council that that still is hanging over our head in terms of, you know, future grant requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cookett. And just to preempt Jen here a little bit, stay tuned, that's coming.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Cookett. That is still on the radar, we are still addressing that item. However, when we got, took that back to the entire group, we've learned that there are other pressures in other departments as well, including economic development, who are being bombarded with requests for funding. The RIPA committee experienced an extreme explosion this year on their requests for funding. So it is a large sort of thing to wrap our heads around. And in, in that, we're going to put some information or wording such that we'll be able to handle some of the larger requests that come forward. So it is on our radar and we are working on it as a team because it's going to be something that all of us will be able to lean on when, when those requests come in.
Okay. Additional comments, questions? Okay, Jen, thank you very much for bringing this forward, this and the previous policy forward. Again, these are foundational pieces. And it does help provide the roadmap on how to move forward with the decision-making. So it's, it's a start. And I know that the next one coming is probably a lot more interesting in terms of drafting. So I look forward to that conversation. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll ask Catherine to read the motion, please.
Resolves that the report titles County of Elgin Growth Reserve Policy from the Director of Finance Treasurer dated July 23, 2024 be received and filed and that the finance policy 0505, presented as Growth Reserve Policy in Appendix A of the report, be approved to guide the strategic use of the Growth Reserve.
Mover and seconder for that? Counselor Cookett? Counselor Jiguer? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving forward with Section 7, Council Correspondence, Items for Consideration, 711, Resolution for Municipality of Bayam Regarding Additional On-Street No-Parking Zones. I guess we'll deal with them one at a time. Peter, present, do you want to speak to this?
I sure can, Mr. Warden. Parking requests are usually received by local municipalities. If there's a specific location where the municipality wishes to prohibit parking, I can work with local staff, my staff can work with local staff, and we can present a bylaw amendment for the future.
Okay. I think that's a reasonable course. Both of these sections are identified, though, are under purview of the county. I'm not, I just wasn't entirely sure how far Robinson went.
It stops at Wellington, I believe.
Okay, so that is what they're asking for then on Robinson's entirely Bayhams. You'll have to argue with Steve on that one. Okay. Any questions, concerns on 711? Let's have the motion then, please.
Resolved that staff be directed to explore the establishment of a no-parking zone on Fulton Street between Elm Street and Snow Street in Vienna in the municipality of Bayham and report back to county council at a future meeting.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Hens, Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? That's carried. 712, Resolution for Municipality of Central Elgin Requesting that the County of Elgin Explore the Purchase of an Asset and Work Order Management Software System. Peter, you're present. Comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd be pleased to speak in regards to this. A previous council hired Strategy Corp. to complete a full-sum road maintenance agreement review. One of the resolutions that emanated from that report was to consider the possibility of implementing a work order management software solution funded by the county and implemented across all municipalities for their use. Most recently, the road supervisors have met and began conversations as to what that solution would look like. And we quickly understood that other service arms that the municipality delivers, such as water and wastewater and parks, would likely also need to tie into the same system. And likely more importantly is, there's a financial component to this as well. So it's not as simple as providing a software solution for roadwork activities only. Therefore, it's going to be recommended that this conversation further evolves at the CAO's meeting to determine if there's interest in abandoning existing systems and migrating toward a collaborative countywide system.
All right, thank you for those comments. Any questions, concerns, comments? I do thank you, that fact that you've already initiated a conversation at the road superintendent Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through Peter. Peter, I know there's always been a feeling that sometimes municipalities get shorted some years and other years with a surplus. Do you think this would help alleviate some of those concerns and would actually be the actual cost for some of the projects and work that we do?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Widner. The work order software itself will help provide a lot of information. It will allow us to, let me just take one step back before I answer this question, because the spirit of the road maintenance agreement as it currently exists is an end result specification. It's been very clear, previous councils have made, that there is a recognition that every municipality has different resources and they do work differently. They all meet a minimum target level of service, however, they provide different levels of service above that baseline. Now, if we implement a system where the county is able to track every municipal vehicle, we will have a lot better information. So in annual reporting, which now comes to the Governance Committee, which is also the CAO group, staff will be able to better ascertain the costs of each activity. And there will be a broader conversation rather than simply increasing funding to ensure that the municipalities that don't seem to manage with the current funding get additional funding. It'll be a larger conversation as to the efficiency as which different service activities are completed at different municipalities. And there's some hesitation, I think, from the Road Supervisors Group, if that's the road we want to go down. There will be additional resources required at the county level and possibly at the local levels to manage such a system, as well as a potential tech IT support. If this is managed at the county, hosted on the county servers, if there's an IT or a technical issue with a GPS unit not registering on a backhoe or something like that, in a roundabout way, we would either have to have a service contractor or those types of things would also need to be considered. So the simple answer is, we're not sure. If we were to implement this, it was going to give us a lot better data, and once council receives that data, additional conversations will be had.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. My understanding, Peter, is that Central Elgin does have a system that's in place where they track all that stuff. And through those conversations, have they shared that data with you? Because I believe that's how we've realized that we're underfunded on the snow removal topic.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. We do receive different type of reporting elements from each municipality because each municipality, for the most part, has different software systems. And yes, Central Elgin has provided not specifically the vehicle tracking information, I'm not sure how that would be useful for us, but they do provide detailed breakdowns as to where their cost structures are going. Now, part of this Strategy Corp. recommendation was also when reviewing the funding allocation model, they could not give a clear indication if the funding model was sufficient enough to meet the activities. Therefore, one of the key recommendations was that municipalities were to report in six different activity buckets. Everybody was doing things a little differently. This year, we have finally implemented, hopefully, the balance of the municipalities to report in these activity buckets. So when the RMA comes, time for renewal, which is only three and a half years away, we'll be in a position to provide council with an apples, a better apples-to-apples comparison to what municipalities are actually spending. The issue still lies in between, there's no forensic audit. The council staff at the county is simply delivering to the Governance Committee the numbers that are being reported by the municipality. And are there inconsistencies in those numbers? We don't dive that deep into the information, we simply report what we're given. But there's always an opportunity for council to revisit the funding allocation model if it's before the RMA is due or not.
Additional comments, questions? Catherine, let's have the motion, please.
Resolved, sorry, resolved that staff be directed to bring this issue forward at the CAO's level to discuss how asset and work order management software systems may affect existing reporting and that these findings be brought to a future county council meeting.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Hens, Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? That's carried. 7.13, Association of Municipalities Ontario and the Ontario Medical Association Requesting that Council pass a resolution advocating for a better Ontario healthcare system. Everyone's had opportunity to peruse the resolution. Does anyone have any concerns, questions, comments? Kind of motherhood, isn't it? Okay. How do you want to deal with this one, Catherine? Do you want to read it all? Good for you.
Whereas the state of healthcare in Ontario is in crisis with 2.3 million Ontarians lacking access to a family doctor, emergency room closures across the province, patients being de-rostered, and 40% of family doctors considering retirement over the next five years, and whereas it is becoming increasingly challenging to attract and retain an adequate healthcare workforce throughout the health sector across Ontario, and whereas Ontario municipal governments play an integral role in the healthcare system through responsibilities in public health, long-term care, paramedicine, and other investments, and whereas the percentage of family physicians practicing comprehensive family medicine has declined from 77 to 2008, oh, in 2008, to 65% in 2022, and whereas per capita healthcare spending in Ontario is the lowest of all provinces in Canada, and whereas a robust workforce development through a provincial sector-wide health human resources strategy would significantly improve access to health services across the province, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin urges the Province of Ontario to recognize the physician shortage in the County of Elgin and Ontario to fund healthcare appropriately and ensure every Ontarian has access to physician care.
We have a mover and seconder for that. Counselor Latham will move. Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Brings us to 7.14, Proclamation Request from CN Rail in Support of Rail Safety Week 2024. As in the former, everyone's had an opportunity to peruse this resolution. It's an interesting one. Haven't seen this one before. Any outstanding drainage issues from CN unpaid? Do we want to support this? That's the question. Yes, Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. You bring up a good point. I mean, we support some things, but we're not getting much support from them on a lot of our problems. The drainage thing is still a huge deal, and a lot of the crossing repairs are a big deal. Rail safety, well, maybe they should fix the damn crossings so you can get across. But if you don't want, if you wish to support this, I would maybe support that. We don't support this. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you very much. And I realize it should not be a quid pro quo and they should be taken separately. I probably was being a little flippant throwing that out there, but the point is, it is a fairly complex relationship, and I thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Widner. Just looking for the pleasure of council here. Unless you want to support it and use it as a lever to see if we can get them to participate in a little more rail crossing safety. Let's read the motion and see where we go.
Whereas Rail Safety Week is to be held across Canada from September 23rd to 29th, 2024. Whereas 229 railway crossings and trespassing incidents occurred in Canada in 2023, resulting in 66 avoidable fatalities and 39 avoidable serious injuries. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railway rights of way are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws, will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas Operation Lifesaver is a public-private partnership whose aim is to work with the public, rail industry, governments, police services, media, and others to raise rail safety awareness. Whereas CN and Operation Lifesaver have requested county council adopt this resolution in support of its ongoing efforts to raise awareness, save lives, and prevent injuries in communities, including our municipality, it is hereby resolved to support National Rail Safety Week to be held from September 23rd to 29th, 2024.
Anyone interested in moving and seconding that motion? Okay, Counselor Hens, Counselor Jaguera. All in favor? And it is carried, thank you. Moving on, 7.1.5 corresponds for Municipality of West Elgin Requesting a Revised Letter of Commitment from the County of Elgin to Proceed with the Relocation of the Rodney Library to the Renovated Rodney Old Town Hall Upon Completion. Point it up here. Okay. Who wishes to speak to this? And I'm going to be quite honest, you and I were both here, Counselor Jaguera, and I almost don't recall dealing with this in October of 2019. I'm sorry. And I'm thinking, Brian, you don't recall being consulted on this, but if it's a matter of record, I kind of think we're painted into someplace. Who wants to speak to it? Counselor Latham?
Well, if you don't, if you've never seen a letter, 2019, that was sent through Yum Steward.
What I'm trying to clarify is, I don't recall the issue even coming to the council, and I understand it did through a closed session. That's the background that I'm getting. And I see the letter here, but of course, I never saw the letter to West Elgin. But it doesn't matter. The point being is, it's before us, and if this is a matter of record, then it's kind of curious because it was done and closed there and it's an open here. Interesting.
Through you, Mr. Warden. As I see it, and as I've been explained by the CAO, in 2019, we had a letter of support from the county about moving the library to the Old Town Hall when renovations were complete. We applied for a grant with a letter, with that letter of support, which we was, we got that grant, which hasn't been used yet because nothing happened to the Old Town Hall. So I was asking for a letter of support so we can use that grant on the Old Town Hall. We had a public meeting recently about the future of the Old Town Hall, and overwhelmingly the vote was to renovate. We had two councillors, we had two councillors on the committee and six people from the public, and who were really motivated to start, and they're coming up with ideas how to raise more money for this endeavor. So I'm asking for a letter of support from the county that when renovations are complete, the library may move into a larger space that benefits the community as our town is growing.
Okay. Thank you for that. Looking for a process forward, Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. You know, it's interesting, both those branches, West, Lorne, and Rodney, have existed as a result of the McMillan Brothers' donation in the late 1950s and have chugged along since that point. And in the course of one meeting, we get two resolutions that deal with both branches. But on this one in particular, yeah, I saw the letter last week as a result of what was circulated to West Elgin. So, you know, in terms of, and I discussed it with our CAO, I'm certainly willing to bring back a report to council on this just to recommend how council may endorse this going forward. I think that any decision to relocate a branch starts with the municipality, and we need a lot more information regarding square footages, you know, operational impacts, that kind of thing, before you can say, yeah, we're definitively going to move into any particular building. So I think the endorsement would be, generally speaking, you know, that council's shown over time that they're supportive of taking advantage of opportunities for more space if it fits our operational needs. And so in this case, I can bring back a report with a recommendation that would see this council generally endorsing, you know, the future of the Rodney branch and working with West Elgin, which may or may not include the Old Town Hall.
Working my way through that thought process. Working my way through that thought process, Brian, but thank you very much for the comments. Councillor Latham, is this time sensitive? Do you, do you need this letter of support ASAP?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. It would be appreciated if we could because we've got this new committee that we've just set up and they are raring to go, if you like.
Understood. The, I guess, reading between the lines for your comments, Brian, are that we're not even aware of what the square footage would merit the Rodney Branch. That's kind of what's underlining here, some of this stuff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. So back in twenty nineteen, when this application was submitted, certainly our staff provided some input into that application that West Elgin submitted regarding our own operational needs. So there's our RuPaul Planning Guidelines, all that was provided at the time to say, hey, you know, here's what could be justified in this community. Then an architectural assessment was done. The, West Elgin has put forward a, through a public meeting, the details of how it looked back in twenty nineteen regarding how the space could be used. But as we know, since that time, numbers have changed pretty dramatically and even there are some new considerations I think that have to be integrated into the rehabilitation of I said Old Town Hall, it's a Rodney Town Hall. I mixed up with Elmer, sorry. That one's on my brain too. So so now they need to, they need to really rethink the project and its scope and the level of funding that's going to be required. But they do have this initial two point five million, if I understand it, that was what went into the original application. There was a very basic layout done of how the library could look in that space. And we did provide some background information, but at this particular time, again, I think there's some dynamics in the building that have to be looked at and that will impact how that original design back in twenty nineteen was done and the as well, we've now got a new leasing framework in place between the county and municipalities. We'd have to consider that as part of this discussion. So working right now on our planning guidelines and what our library association metrics for the relating to service catchment areas, that kind of thing. And certainly in the case of Rodney, it's operating at fourteen hundred and I think it's fourteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet. So those guidelines would justify an expansion of some type as to how much it would need and what this, what that space would be in the Rodney Town Hall. I think at the time it was roughly just under three thousand square feet was contemplated. I don't know how that would look given the scope of work that now needs to be done. So you're right, there's a lot of detail here that you don't have. But it could be handled just by generally endorsing, working with West Elgin on a future relocation or expansion to the library subject to our own planning guidelines and, but and also subject to more definitive information from West Elgin regarding the details.
Councillor Latham?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Warden. It was just brought up that the fact that that grant was allowed with the support letter that came from the county. And now the times lap so long that if we use that grant or we think we may lose that grant without a continuous support from the county. So we can't even think of starting the renovation if we're going to lose the grant that's been provided. They've extended it two years for us. And so that's why it's fairly important that we do start on this project before too long. But with, everybody's a little worried about starting without the support of the county.
So if I understand correctly, then councillor Latham, yes, the original grant application was contingent upon a letter in principle from the county. That would, should still be in play, right? But we are in a position now that I think we're trying to understand just how much space and if we are thinking of moving according to the rubric, so we call it that to this other facility, should that be council's decision? And what you're getting at, Brian, is it, is there a way that we can offer support to you and West Elgin in a vague way, from a principled point of way? That's what you're really asking for, right? Councillor Woodner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And maybe through you to councillor Latham, would an agreement in principle contingent on some of Brian's concerns and whatever, would that be good enough, acceptable?
I'm certain you have confidence in that quality.
Okay. Yes, Nick, please.
Thank you through you, Warden, to council. And if necessary, we can go into close to receive legal advice in a more fulsome way. But I am happy to make my general comment publicly because I think it's probably helpful for the public discussion. It raised a concern for me if we were to basically go beyond anything that Brian just described in his sort of qualified, I guess, motion. I think the commitment needs to be to work with West Elgin if we're lacking enough information to actually commit to using a space because it sounds like the committee wants to make financial decisions based on the level of county commitment, which is essentially relying on something. And so I'm happy to go into further detail. If council wants further detail, we should do that enclosed. But I'm not trying to dissuade anyone from the overall projects or any of the merits of it. It just sounds like we don't have enough information to make that commitment right now. And I do have a leave of good concern about doing that when we don't have that info.
All right. Thank you for that. Councillor Jagir, and then I'll come back to you, councillor Latham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was going to say something along the same lines in that sense, it doesn't look like so the grant has been extended for two years. So to me, that means our letter is still good for two years. So if the committee is ready to go, I think they can go without a reaffirmation of that support. To me, their first task should be to work with the county on, you know, the scope of the project, the financial impact, the visioning and the operational needs. So I don't see that this, us not issuing a letter now will not stop the committee. In fact, we need the committee to get started so we can have more information and then council, as needed, may consider another letter. So I would not support another letter at this point. I don't think it's necessary. But I would encourage this project to go forward.
Councillor Latham?
Through you, Mr. Warden. And I will bring forward more information on square feet and accept. I realize that there's no information in this at all. It was just, it was just an ask, you know, just to keep the support up. But and like you said, I don't think there's any, probably any need for it right now. But I certainly will get you the square footage of what exactly is planned when they do have their plans in line. And then we know exactly what we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you for that, councillor Latham. I'm wondering if council would be amenable to the fact that we at least direct staff respond back looking for more information and to work with West Elgin. That way it closes the loop on the correspondence. Okay. I think we probably do need a future report because if we are looking at perhaps changing the location of the branch, we need to have an understanding of what size, what's, you know, what scale, yeah. Yes, councillor Noble?
Through you, Warden. One other concern might be accessibility, like when we're looking at a project starting from nineteen and we're in twenty twenty-four now. I think the accessibility and that would also affect the potential of the project because of costs. We did just finish our elevators here, so we have an understanding of what those potential costs could be, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We're trying to navigate a road here for you, councillor Latham, okay? You ready? Okay, we gave her enough time. Thank you.
Resolved that the request for a revised letter of commitment from the county of Elgin Council to proceed with the relocation of the Rodney Library to the renovated Rodney Old Town Hall upon completion be referred to the Director of Community and Cultural Services. And that the Director of Community and Cultural Services work with the municipality of West Elgin to gather more fulsome information on the project. And that the Director of Community and Cultural Services be directed to provide council with a report regarding this request, including square footage needs, leasing considerations, and requirements to make the facility library ready at a future date of county council.
Okay. Mover and secondor. Councillor. Thought nobody was for a minute. Councillor Hens and councillor Jagir. All in favor? Okay, thank you. That's carried. Seven point one point six corresponds for municipality of West Elgin requesting a letter from Elgin County Council and Elgin County Library indicating the additional vacant space required for the West Lauren Library Branch. You want to speak to this, Brian? Well, councillor Latham's going to speak to it first.
Yes, this is talking about the library in West Lauren. And it seems that it's running more or less at capacity. And right now, there's the opportunity, we have empty offices that are joining. And we was asking council to see if there was any interest in taking those offices over. They're empty at the moment and couldn't be utilized into the library to expand it to what it really needs. I think Brian has looked at it and I think maybe looked at it with favor, but I could let you speak on that if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. And certainly councillor Latham and I have chatted about this and also chatted with West Elgin staff. The vacancy that to which he speaks is a result of employment services that has vacated the space adjacent to the West Lauren Library. And so that space is now open and available. You know, over the years, I mean, council has been generally supportive of opportunities to look to expand library facilities. And in this particular case, I did get information this morning from West Elgin staff that I know there's two options that are considered in this resolution, but the employment services space is nine hundred and seventy square feet. And so, you know, without bringing back further information to council again, a little more details regarding what this proposal looks like. To let you know, option A of employment services is about nine hundred and seventy square feet. I don't know exactly what the square footage is associated with the entire first floor of the building. But we will bring back a recommendation in working with West Elgin staff to determine what is feasible. And also maybe dovetail that again with the planning information that you need to see regarding, you know, what is, what are the catchment areas and the service requirements because, and also generally looking at what this library service for the entire municipality of West Elgin look like. You know, this is, this is really should be part of a, not only a here and now, but a future, a future planning consideration. I can tell you going into this, our planning guidelines would indicate an expansion to West Lauren can be justified. And this is, could be a good opportunity for us. But we need to know things like, again, as Catherine alluded to, making it library ready. What are the commitments on the municipality to do that? And just a formal layout and drawing and that kind of thing. Then, of course, we have the lease considerations that would need to go into this. So I will again offer to bring back a report detailing this proposal, working with West Elgin staff and give you, you know, a more fulsome picture as to how this could proceed.
Okay, thank you for that, Brian. I think that's good advice. Any other comments or, excuse me, concerns regarding the suggestion provided to us? I'm comfortable proceeding in that direction. Just trying to use up time here to give Catherine a chance. Councillor Noble?
Through you, Warden. Could we add budget impacts on that?
Yes.
Report? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Latham?
I would like to speak just again on that West Lauren. I mean, it has the, it has toilets, men's and ladies available, which is quite handy. It has separate rooms or you could knock it into one large room, one large space. And we're also making just tentative inquiries of some extra car parking, which would facilitate that for that property. Which is most important on that corner. And we think we've got an opening for a car park that could be for the library. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Any other comments? You might want to kill some dead space, hum a few bars. Councillor Latham, that is the building that you currently meet in as a council, is it not? Yeah, thank you. Now we're ready. Please, Catherine.
That the resolution from the municipality of West Elgin regarding the facility expansion of the West Lauren Library be referred to the Director of Community and Cultural Services. And that the Director of Community and Cultural Services be directed to provide a report analyzing the square footage needs, lease considerations, budgetary implications, and requirements to make the facility library ready of the options proposed. And that this be done through the lens of library services as a whole in West Elgin.
Mover and secondor, please. Councillor Woodner, councillor Noble will second. All in favor? Carried. Thank you for that. Seven point two, the consent agenda, items to receive for information. Five items. Any item anyone wants to bring attention to? I would simply like to note, it was a pleasure and an honor to receive a response to the birthday greeting to Lord Elgin. It was it took about a week to decipher, but but it was really a pleasure to receive that. I have the translation available here. Brian, please.
While we're on that one, Mr. Warden, I would like to give credit to Gordon Maders, who actually delivered that letter to him, who works for our paramedicine service and is also Lord Elgin's aide-de-camp and visited him at the end of June.
Absolutely. He keeps us in touch and I certainly appreciate that. Seeing no questions or comments.
Resolved that correspondence items seven point two point one to seven point two point five be received and filed.
Mover and secondor, please. Councillor Noble will move. Councillor Latham will second. All in favor? That's carried. Section eight, other business. Are there any statements or inquiries by members? Eight point two, notice of motion. Eight point three, matters of urgency. Okay, seeing none, we will then move into closed meeting items.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act section two thirty-nine two. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Closed meeting item number two, Legal Services twenty-four ten, Joint Services Agreement. Under section F, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And K, a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. And closed meeting item number three, Human Resources and Employment Metrics Update. Under section B, Personal Matters About An Identifiable Individual, Including Municipal or Local Board Employees.
Mover and secondor, please. Councillor Noble will move. Councillor Hens will second. All in favor? And that's carried. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and secondor, please. Councillor Latham and councillor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number one.
Resolved that the July ninth, twenty twenty-four closed meeting minutes be adopted.
Mover and secondor, please. Councillor Noble? And councillor Woodner will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number two.
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and secondor, please. Councillor Noble and councillor Jagir will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number three.
Resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Human Resources be received and filed.
Mover and secondor, please. Mover and secander, please. Counselor Widner, Counselor Hens? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Section 11, Motion to Adopt Recommendations From the Committee of the Whole?
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Moved by Counselor Noble? Counselor Jagir will second. Thank you. All in favor? That's carried. Confirming bylaw?
Bylaw Number 2430, Being a Bylaw to Confirm the Proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the July 23rd, 2024 meeting. Resolved that bylaw Number 2430 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and secander, please. Counselor Latham will move, Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And the one that everyone's been waiting for? Adjournment motion.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 12:35 PM to meet again on August 13th, 2024 at 9 o'clock AM.
I suspect that Counselor Widner's looking to move that. Anyone willing to second that? There we go, Counselor Hens. I thought we were going to be here for a while. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us this morning, and we look forward to seeing you in August. Have a pleasant day.